We'd like to call this meeting to order of the Okone County Planning Commission this Thursday, uh, no, this Monday, February the 6th.
Right.
At 5:00 o'clock. I don't know why they have Thursday on our agenda here. All right, our first order of business is invocation. Mr. Nix, if you would.
Yes, sir. Everyone pray with me if you will. Heavenly Father, we ask that you please watch over this committee and the planning staff, and guide us to wise and safety-conscious decisions in support of the public. We also ask that you watch over the county law enforcement, first responders, and other county workers as they perform their duties, that they may return home safely to their families after every shift. And finally, we ask that you please watch over the county and state leaders as they work to make the county and state a better place to live each day. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Okay, our next one is approval of minutes for the January 19th.
I'm going to approve minutes. Second.
Got a motion, second. Any corrections? Next. If, no, if not, all those favor.
Unhuh. unanimous.
Okay. We don't have any public comment for non-agenda items. Commission member comments. Start on my left.
I have three for the comp plan. Check marks. One second. You probably know recently in the news, the compound in Unica Village was torn down. Sad day, but it cleaned up an area that was, had more than 150 crimes reported to the sheriff's office. So it was a long time coming, but it was solemn. So anyway, that satisfies a check mark, 11.1, 1.4, 1.5, which says, "Seek a plan and implement development for the redevelopment of unincorporated areas, Fairplay, Oakway, Newry, and Unica." There's one. Broadband was awarded to access to Okony Counties. Upstate Fiber, it was given a $24 million grant from the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act, and that's going to happen. It was granted, and it's going to go into Fairplay, Long Creek, Mountain Rest, Oakway, and Tacoa. And that satisfies 7236. Work with communication providers to ensure communication access speed for local government, businesses, residents, and visitors. And what was my other one? Oh, this one. There was an article about Habitat for Humanity, 3.2, 1.2. Development, encourage and promote the development of housing options that are affordable. Habitat for Humanity is, does great work for providing affordable housing. It's a pay-it-sweat-equity and pay-it-forward kind of system. They do build four to five houses a year. They have the resale store on Bounty Land Road, which is 100% donations. It's not a charity, but it makes people, you need to supply three months, I think, of W2s and then work your way with it, and they supply the interest-free loans. So, good organization. There you go.
Well, last but not least, on the comprehensive plan, we, I applaud Mrs. Brock for, and the county council for voting to move forward to attempt to fund, or provide additional funding to support sewer south of I-85. I know that's in our comprehensive plan. All have.
Yeah, I want to bring to light the agricultural task force, to the eyes of the public and the community in South Union, it turned out to be a disaster because the information passed along to the committee was very inaccurate. Nobody has seen the survey that was supposedly sent out to the public. I know, I don't know where the young lady got her facts and figures from, but they are not correct. Supervisor made some very unkind comments about agriculture in the community. The community in that area has rallied the troops, and sewer expansion got this started, but now it's not about sewer expansion. It's about the disrespect that the agricultural community has received. It's a thriving entity, provides lots of jobs, lots of commerce, a lot of money. Just the poultry industry itself is producing over $150 million. That's a significant economic impact, but the agricultural community has got a black eye right now. I don't think it was intentional at all, but the troops are rallied and ready to go, and we're going to be in strong in number at the council meeting tomorrow, which has been canceled. So I would like for y'all to just kind of keep your mind on agriculture and the economic impact it has, and that those folks get the respect that they deserve.
Nick, got any?
I don't.
Yeah, I was just wanting to mention that I think there's a number of us that might be interested in having Chris Elliott come in. I don't know what the process is for him to come in and talk about the sewer, where it exists now, what ideas they have about expansion. You know, we pretty much hear about things from the newspaper, which I think we have a chance of hearing from the director of the OJRSA, and kind of stay ahead of the newspaper. And I would think we might want to bring him in, you know, beginning every year or something, just to kind of stay abreast. Because as we've talked before, it's really these developers following the sewer. So if we know where they plan to expand in advance, then that helps us, you know, inform the public. Has anybody got suggestions on how we might go about the process or procedure to get Mr. Elliott in for one of our meetings?
James, James, could you do that check and see when he's available? I know we don't have any room at our next meeting, but maybe the first meeting in March. See if he's available for that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to do that as a motion?
Yes, I'm making that a motion.
Second.
Second. All of them favor? All right.
Was that unanimous?
Unanimous. All right, I'll say a few things. Number one, I'd like for the commission to keep Mr. Myers in their prayers due to a death in the family. Also, I've heard that Mr. Hart has had some kind of medical situation, so keep both of them in your prayers. Number two, as the chairman of the agricultural task force, I would, if there has been comments made that were disrespectful, or hurtful, or anything to the agricultural industry in the county, I personally would like to apologize for the committee, or for the task force. I don't think it was intentional.
It wasn't, it's just misinformation.
It was just...
Uninformed comments.
Well, we have a lot of that, but I would like to apologize in advance for that. But we've got a lot on our plate for the next, for this meeting and our next meeting. So everybody, if you will, when we get the agendas, we'll get backup material, read it, look at it. Any questions, please call James, or call me. If I don't know, I'll call James, or whoever I need to call to get the information back to you, because we need to get, these next two meetings are going to be probably vital to the rest of the year. So, with that...
Can I say one more, ask one, just one question?
Got it.
Not really necessarily related to the task force, but to the ag advisory board? I wanted to know their purpose and their definition. And one of the duty, under duties and responsibilities, it says, "Make policy recommendations through the planning commission and to county council regarding ag land use." How does that happen? Do they have a point person that's supposed to be reporting to us, or talking to us, or us with them? I don't recall any real integration between the two, the two.
We have talked with them before, got information from them before. The chairman has actually come before the planning commission once or twice, and gave us a report of what they're looking at, or what they would like to do. We could make that happen again in the near future.
It just seems like a good idea to have some regular communication between the two of us, that's all.
But we could get them, we could get the chairman back in here, you know, maybe in March, if possible.
I think the last interaction we've had with the ag council was when Mike and I, Mike Smith and I went and spoke to them, probably been a year ago or so.
Yeah, well, I know we've had, didn't we have, we've had the chairman at our meeting a couple of times, but he didn't actually...
So there was an ordinance that went back and forth between the two that was sent to council, sent back.
Last, last year.
Yeah, that was the biggest interaction, I think, between the two groups.
So we can check with that, maybe we can get them in one of the meetings in March, get a report from them, see what they're working on, if they need help.
A quarterly update would be one.
Yeah, that's what I was...
We can ask for that.
Even if they send in a letter and we...
Yeah, they don't have to be here personally.
Yeah, we can do that. So unless, unless there's anything else, let's move on to discussion regarding amending Chapter 32 of the Okone County Code of Ordinance by adding a provision providing...
Were there any statements?
Of staff comments.
Oh, I forgot about you, you do have one.
I got, well, I got a couple little things for you first. Just a reminder, our next meeting is not on a Monday, it will be on a Thursday. The 20th is President's Day, as counties close, until the 23rd, Thursday evening. And then I've got two subdivisions to share with you that have come in. This first one. This is Falls Park in Kennedy Creek. This is a lake community.
That topography there looks pretty steep.
Correct.
Has that been sent maybe to Soil and Water or for...
It will be, yeah, it will be.
Okay.
Oh, Celia Myers left that. Who's her new, who's her...
Mark Fisher.
Art Fisher?
Mark.
Oh, Mark Fisher.
Sorry, that's probably mine.
Mark Fisher, okay.
So it looks like someone's lights are set back pretty far off the water. Is it because of the topography, or because of the new?
Um, I couldn't tell you their rationale. The 450 feet from the lake shore is a new one. Don't know if you can see it on here very well or not. We'll continue to give them preliminary comments on this as it is reviewed.
Is this cliffs, or the reserves are somewhere up there?
Um, here's the zoning.
Is this place?
Yeah, this is probably old, leftover property.
Is this a preliminary drawing, or, you know, are they planning on...
This is a sketch drawing, but they have submitted it, so they'll go into preliminary with getting the comments back. There's several things that they need to change over there just as they get going.
Some of the, uh... DMV, not DMV, what, we...
DOT.
DOT? Will they be notified first or last?
Yeah, good question. Speaking of that.
So...
It's on our agenda.
Okay. I'll let that one go then. Thank you.
They do have a good bit of green space in that, so...
They do have several comment areas that are in there.
Okay, I'll put the next one.
If you're ready, we can move on to the second, if you like.
Go ahead.
This is going to be Nelly Road.
So this is a continuation of Falcon's Layer, is that correct?
Uh, essentially. So it is additional homes in that area. I don't know who the original developer was.
Were these, were these in the original pre-plan of Falcon's Layer? Was the original plan, was this designed as green space?
It was left out, so you have the lots that are around on this side, and then there were a few that were actually put over here. I'm going to turn this off. And then the rest of this was left in this shape with cul-de-sacs put in, so I would assume that there was some intent for this to be future development. It was not phased out or designed at that time.
So they put the roads in?
Well, they plowed it, they're not actually built. You can see there's trees and...
Well, I mean, they built Falcon's Layer West.
Right. But these are roads.
Gotcha.
Well, that might be cut out.
I was going to say, I...
Some of these developments will do a phase one, phase two, phase three.
That's what I was wondering, if this was already kind of a preapproval from 20 years ago, and if this was just a, now it's coming to fruition.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, those new investors, you know, bought it a couple of years ago, and they, they getting a return on their money, their investment.
Well, that development is looking good, that's for sure.
Well, I got to be on my own, unless you got any questions, but thanks. Unless you got any.
Okay. Then that's all, we'll move on to item number eight, discussion regarding amending Chapter 32 of the Okone County Code of Ordinance about adding a provision providing for a preapproval by South Carolina DOT. Are the Okone County Roads and Bridges Department in relation to subdivision plans submitted for preliminary approval? The floor is now open.
So we've already approved the state roads situation. And now this is county.
So we approved the Highway 123 corridor for that portion of the state road. That's the only portion of the state road in the county. This would be consistent with that for everybody else. So with any public road, so a county road or state road, if you're adjacent to it, if your, if Chris' department's coming from one of those two bodies, this will put everybody the same vote, with the same rules.
Yeah, which I think that's the way it should be. Everybody, instead of having, having one little group has to do something different than everybody else. We need to have it all the same.
So is, is state roads part A and county part B? Is that how we, or is this all, just all roads, or how's it?
This would include all public roads. So this would not do anything with private roads and their agreements that they have with people that want to develop private roads.
So all public roads regardless if they're state or county?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
So are we amending what we have already approved as a commission?
Yes.
We are amending it to say...
Well, that's what this is, so I don't, I mean, I'm telling you what we did.
We would change the wording.
This takes out the Highway 123 corridor portion of that, and includes the county roads and bridges.
Okay.
Is this not a new section, Section 10?
So Section 10 is what we approved for the Highway 123 portion.
Okay, so there's something missing from my old copy.
So final, the third agreement on that was December 16th at the special call. So that's been less than two months.
So this Number 10 that we have in there now is going to be generalized to the whole county?
Yes. That would be the intent of this, is to take all the references to Highway 123, and the reference to only the state roads, and include basically every public road in the county.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I guess we need to move to have Mr. Root look at the wording.
He will, that'll be the next step. It'll be the same way.
Okay.
He'll make it better.
So we just need to make a motion to send this to Mr. Root, for him to...
I do have a couple of questions. I'm, I'm reading the agenda, and it talks, make sure I'm understanding this, because the Okone Roads Department in relation to subdivision planning for preliminary approval, but the document says prior to final approvals. Is it, are we dealing with preliminary approval or final approval? Because the wording of the, of Number 10 says final approval, and the wording of the...
It's a good point.
Yeah.
That's a really good point. Well, our intention here is that the DOT be informed prior to...
Prior to, yeah.
And give their approval.
Yeah.
Prior to what? Preapproval or prior to final approval? How does it work now?
Prior to preapproval.
It needs to be prior to preliminary approval.
Yeah. As a cross-out final.
Let me just submit to, this is submit to and receive permit. Prior to final, so now we're saying prior to preapproval?
Well, since we're saying they need to have it back in hand, I guess you can give it their way, just that this comments would have to be incorporated, so they would not be able to get a final from the county without their permanent hand.
And the permanent hand might be road studies and stuff like that incorporated?
It could.
So, so should we add the wording on the last sentence, "All comments from permitting agencies shall be incorporated into the plan," submitted to the county prior to final approval?
No, prior, preapproval.
Well, we're, we're, they have to, they have to apply prior to preliminary approval, right? And so then they, if they give them comments, they have to have them resolved prior to the final approval.
All right, so it, so again, are we saying final approval, preapproval? Because those are two way different things.
I guess we're saying prior to...
We want it to be first up to comment on their roads, right?
Excuse me.
Sorry.
We're, we're saying prior to preliminary approval. That's where I'm hearing that we're, we need that wording.
Yeah.
Question. And this is for Jim, Chairman. Could you explain the preliminary approval process and the final approval process as it relates to this piece of activity?
So that final plaque is going to be what's recorded with the insurance agent's office, and that's what's required to start subdividing and selling the property. So in a major subdivision, they'll go through, when they get their preliminary approval, they can start moving dirt essentially. They can start doing all the infrastructure work that's on that plan. They can start cutting in roads, they can start doing all that, with the intent that they're going to be good. And then the final is when those roads are done, all the infrastructure's in, that people who would be buying that subdivided property could go ahead and start building immediately. So that's what's required to actually get a building permit to put a house in.
So can they start cutting roads prior to meeting with roads and bridges?
They could potentially, but they'd be accepting some liability, and that those roads could change based on comments received.
So they wouldn't necessarily start moving dirt with roads until they got their permits from roads and bridges to do so?
It would be in their best interest not to.
Right.
Is that what we're changing it to, is they have to do that first before they do anything, or?
Well, they have to do it first anyway, or they have to do it prior to doing the roads anyway. I, I do have an issue on the preapproval part as a generic term just under this thought process. If you're about to develop something, and we're saying you got to go get your permit approved from roads and bridges prior to doing something else, that could be a $2,500 permit, or it could be a $25,000 permit. But say somebody has a bigger hurdle. Say, say somebody wants to put in a assisted living facility here in the area that has single-family homes, and then has some assisted living, and then maybe a little mini hospital-type full-care facility. Well, that turns into commercial, and all of a sudden, as a developer, I'm going, "My biggest hurdle is getting a zoning change, but the county is going to require me to spend $30,000 on something over here, and I might not even get zoning approval to do my assisted living facility over here." So as a developer, the developer should be allowed to take on their biggest hurdle and most expensive hurdle first, rather than us saying, "You got to go take on roads and bridges first." Now, they should all be done prior to final approval, which again is the wording currently here, but just to say, "We're not going to take a look at it until you spend $30,000 over here on a road study," when the developer's going, "I'm going to spend $200,000 just getting a zoning change over here to be able to do my assisted living facility." So why couldn't they spend their biggest hurdles at their leisure to make those decisions if we're saying preapproval? You got to go spend money for preapproval.
Don't developers, don't they do traffic studies and things like that?
They do.
That would make it an ankle.
So they have to check all those boxes all the time before final approval anyway. We're just saying now that, and this says final approval, and that's fine. We're kind of restating what we're already doing, or they're already doing, but if we're saying they have to go spend money on, before they can even apply, before a preapproval, why would, why would we require that of somebody when there are other things that may be bigger hurdles for them? If it's preapproval.
James, right now in our, that we, council's already approved for the 123 corridor, they have to go through DOT first.
They do.
To get their encroachment permits and all of that. And then they go through the rest of the list.
Yep.
To get the final approval from you.
Yes.
All we're wanting to do is make that procedure through the entire county on whatever road is there. You just have to go to roads and bridges, or you have to go to DOT first, get your, get approved for your encroachment, where you're going to put, where you're going to get on your land, wherever it's going to be, regardless of what you're going to do inside. It's just where you access the property from the main highway. You do the same thing from roads and bridges. That's all we're changing, or we're wanting to change, correct?
This would just be the, yeah, by that, this would just be the...
Let me say something real quick. So we make that assumption as if we have a one-size-fits-all county. We're talking about 123, we're talking about a commercial corridor. And so that would make very much sense on a commercial corridor. But 99% of our county is not commercial corridor roads. So we're about to take something that would apply to a commercial contractor and put it on every residential development in the entire county. And again, all I'm saying is, is they've got to do this anyway before they can start doing anything. They've got to get all the boxes checked. We're just telling them now the order at which they have to spend money. And I'm saying, there may be hurdles, why spend money over here if this hurdle is the biggest objection point down here? We may never make it past this one. Why do they have to spend money over here? Why can't they spend money on this one that may never fly first? But we're telling them they can.
Can I make a, ask a question?
Go ahead.
There's not a cost associated with that.
There absolutely is.
With a variance?
No, if, if, if I was to go and develop 50 acres, and my first step was call DOT and say, "Where can I put driveways and encroachments?" That's not going to cost me anything.
If you have roads, so if you build more than 11 homes, it does.
Hold on a minute, that's the, that's the...
That's accurate. So they will ask you more specifically about what your plan is.
Right.
So if you want a residential driveway on 100 acres that you're going to farm, it would still be a commercial permit. There would probably not be a whole lot of hurdles they want you to do. If you want to build 125 homes, they have a very different process to go through.
If you want to build 12 homes, they have a very different process you have to go through.
But we're talking about cost.
Right.
And we're talking about what order of cost. They've still got to go through that cost. They still have to do it. We're just telling them, "You got to spend money over here, even though we're going to kick it out over here after you've spent this money."
I thought we were talking about approval process. I thought we were talking about approval process, not, you know, actual dollars being spent.
But this is saying you have to, to get the permit, it's not a pre-permit, it's a permit.
I mean, there would be a cost associated, so if there is a bigger subdivision and they have more than eleven homes on a county road, more than probably twenty homes on a state road, they'll be required to do a traffic impact study. That could be any range of cost depending on what's included in it to get that final permit approval.
But you, again, they have to go through all of those things for final. But now we're telling them, well, you gotta go spend money over here prior to pre-approval. If we change that word to pre-approval rather than final approval.
What about this idea? What if we keep what we've got in the ordinance and then add this to it?
Just add the little...
Yeah, keeping the commercial one twenty-three as is. And then figuring out what do, what do we need to add to the ordinance to cover the things Mike's talking about? Just keep them separate. Don't replace one with the other.
And I definitely think that if, if this isn't already being done, it needs to be done before, before the county finally, I would hate for us to say, yeah, your subdivision is approved and we don't even know if they've gotten approval from roads and bridges. And it sounds like that that may be happening.
It seems like the safest thing for us to do is switch back to final approval. If we were able to keep one twenty-three as is in the ordinance, switch back to final approval on this suggestion. And then that way, you don't have this money being spent, you know, ahead of when they'd really like to spend it.
Right, or they could at least spend it in their need.
One more. We have not made a motion to amend this item as written. So right now it says final approval.
Now, this is just discussion. We're not adding, took a vote, hadn't made a motion. The item on the agenda was discussing. So we can make any appropriate motion that we need to change wording and then discuss that particular item. But this is just discussing everything as a whole at this point. There's no motion needed for that right now.
So I have one more question then. Is this, James, written the way you need it to be written as it is with final approval? Or is that a mistake and it needs to say pre-approval for your benefit?
I think thinking about the one twenty-three, to be consistent would be for preliminary approval. So right now for preliminary approval, you have to get all your boxes checked. You have to apply to DAC, you have to apply to DOT or the roads and bridges. You have to apply signatures to the water folks. There's a whole bunch of boxes you got to just check that you have sent out here in good faith, here in communication. If you're hooking up a sewer with OJRS, with the municipalities, with water. So all of those things are being worked on during that process. But are not required to be finalized at that point.
So on this, we're saying that it is finalized by saying it's, the permit has been received, meaning it's been approved. So either one of those two words is in conflict with what we did on one twenty-three. On one twenty-three, we said, you gotta, you gotta make all these applications. Here, we're saying, not only do you have to have made the applications, you gotta do all the work and give us the permits before pre-approval. So we're making it even tougher on this.
Change the word from final approval to preliminary in what's written.
Receive permit and receiving permit are, in the first sentence, are also incorrect if, for, if we say pre.
Wouldn't they have to already have an encroachment permit to get on their land if they're, no matter what they're doing? You can't just come off a main highway and make a road. You've got to have an encroachment permit, whether you're starting to build or, or if you're making it a pasture and it's, don't you need some kind of permit to, to make a road there?
You can have a hundred acres and have a driveway and have an encroachment for that driveway. But if it's in a, but, but if you're building a bigger subdivision, you have to have view lanes and you have to have so many feet of stopping distance and you have to have all of this, more so than, I mean, a driveway can be in a curve and they put up a big old mirror that says, look here, but you couldn't do something like that for a subdivision. So as the homes increase, the distances for that encroachment down the road also, the view also increases.
So what, what you're saying, they shouldn't have to receive this encroachment permit before they get, do anything else? See, to me, that should be the per se, they should have to get regardless of what they're, if they're going to build.
I'm saying that, that as written is fine, that they have to receive a permit prior to final approval from the planning department. That you got to get all your permits prior to the, prior to the planning department saying, here's your stamp, go build. But what we're saying is, is they have to receive all those permits prior to even, before the planning department, you can even knock on their door and say, I would like to do something.
I don't think it's worded that way. I think their first step still got to come here.
See, I mean, the first sentence up here says applicant shall submit to and receive encroachment permit approval from whatever department of the county or the state prior to final approval.
Which is right, but if we change that word to pre-approval, then you're saying you got to go get all your permits before you can knock on the planning department's door.
And the one that we've got now that we changed for one twenty-three, it says pre-approval?
It says applied. It changes the first statement. It doesn't say that they've, that they've been, that they've received permit approvals, it says that they've applied.
It says applicant shall apply for everything before...
Prior to pre-approval.
Or prior to pre-approval. And all we're wanting to do is just change where it's, where it's at. We want to change it from Highway one twenty-three, that little section, we want to make it county-wide. And we wouldn't be changing any of the words.
That was my request, was to put it on so it would be consistent with the other. And Mr. Johnson's point is questioning whether or not it should be consistent with everywhere else.
Or, and I don't know that, no, that's only, that's what I'm saying. You've said that the one twenty-three, do we have, what, that's how that's written?
I do.
Because you've mentioned word applied, is that the way one twenty-three reads? Because the first sentence doesn't talk about applied, it says you've received the permits, not applied for the permits.
Well, how can you receive a permit if you haven't applied for the approval?
That's what I'm saying. You...
So how would you say it?
You, you're, so I apply for a permit and DOT is going to go, okay, spend thirty thousand dollars and then we'll give you your approval. So what, what my question is, is on the one twenty-three, we said you have to go apply. Doesn't mean you've spent any money, you've not written a check, you just went and put in an application. And now you can go knock on his door and say, hey, I put in my application. What this document says is, I put in my application, I paid thirty thousand dollars, and now I come to your door and say, can I do this? So applied is one thing, received approval is a thirty thousand dollar expense.
How often do developers develop before receiving approval?
Not many, I mean, I can't imagine.
So if somebody applies, there's a period of time before it's approved. In that window, do they start digging or do they wait?
No, so here's the difference, is pre-approval and final approval. So the developer isn't going to, he's going to do all his traffic studies, his, everything else prior to final approval. But we're saying prior to knocking on the, the planning department's door and saying, I'd like to build a deal, a subdivision, we're saying you go spend thirty thousand dollars over here, you go get the architect to do all this with, and then you come knock on our door. So we, we've got wording here that's in conflict.
Do you see it that way, James?
Sorry, I'm trying to find this with the one twenty-three.
How do you all read it? Do you not read it that way?
Well, this has already been approved, right?
No.
No, that hasn't.
I'm talking about the one for one twenty-three.
But it doesn't read this way.
It's already been approved by council.
But it doesn't read this way.
But this is, this on the, on the screen is...
Yeah, and the problem is, is if you go look at the electronic ordinances that are online or what I've printed out, which I just printed out like a couple of weeks ago, it doesn't have item number ten yet for the Highway one twenty-three piece. So I can't find the wording for it.
It actually came out in our Friday email with the one twenty-three.
For the official one in the county, when that was...
It wasn't the official, gotcha.
From county council.
Well, James is looking that up. My comment would be, I think we should always consider safety is, is the intention here for me. I think safety.
But none of this has to do with safety. It has to be done, you have to check all the boxes before you start moving dirt. You can't just go, so it has to be done prior to, prior to building a subdivision, either way. What we're saying is, is that prior to coming and knocking on his door and asking if you can build a subdivision, we're telling them they've got to go spend money on all this other stuff prior to knocking on the door.
But I wouldn't think an investor or developers or, you know, what you want to call them would take any of those steps without the assurance that they know what they're doing to begin with. I mean, they know all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. I mean, and here's my example, like I was talking about earlier about one of the developments in the county is ninety percent done with grading and hadn't even applied for a sewer permit yet. So I would think that would be kind of in the same ballpark with the roads. I mean, they would, I don't know if they'd go that far thinking, well, we may not get an encroachment. I don't, I don't think those guys take those risks. I understand exactly what you're saying and I can see that, but I don't think they would take those risks and spend that money without the assurance that they're going to get them, you know?
I'm not understanding the question. So you're saying that the other hurdles? Because again, it's not just a matter of, I want to put my drive on this road. It may be a matter of, I want to rezone this from something to a mixed-use development. Or a planned unit development, a, a PUD property.
Not interrupting, guys, but this ordinance that was passed says specifically it's subdivision. It has nothing to do with individual homes being built. It's subdivisions have to have pre-approval in relations to subdivision plans submitted to preliminary approval, for preliminary approval of Oconee County for properties with road frontage, US Highway one twenty-three. All we're wanting to do, in my understanding, is right about that point, change that from road frontage on US Highway one twenty-three between Oconee County and Pickens County border is eliminate that pretty much from that point and have it state in some way, shape, form, or fashion to say, all roads in the county, whether they're state or county, you have to do what the county has already passed.
So are we saying that the whole county, every road is potentially a one twenty-three commercial?
This is for subdivisions, not individual homes. It's specifically said subdivision plans, not private property.
And the subdivision does not, the subdivision can be me cutting off a one-acre piece for one person to build another household.
Then it needs to be changed to, if you're building fifty-five, I mean...
Like a major subdivision.
Major, something to, to affect the commercial subdivision, the building of homes, you know, like, like Mountain Road or others. But we want it to apply to all roads for their county or state rather than just that one little section of state road.
And this is written a little different. You're providing for pre-approval by DOT in relation to plans submitted for preliminary approval. It's written a little different than this, right? Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's all we were wanting to make it. If you're building a sub, regardless where you're putting a subdivision, you have to follow that, that rule.
What is involved in a South Carolina DOT pre-approval? Are road studies involved on pre-approval process? It could be.
Could be. It's up to the state to determine the level.
James, can I bring up one of the changes that you suggested on one of the developments about an encroachment and the DOT came and looked and suggested a different change and the developer completely agreed with it? So I don't think those guys, like I say, they going to apply for the most, biggest bang they can get for their book. And, and then, and then the willing and knowing they probably may have to take a change.
Right, but you, we're talking about two different things here. They absolutely have to do that prior to their final approval with planning. We're just telling them the order at which they have to spend money. They still have to do it. You're right, they have to do it. They're planning on doing it. But you're telling them the order at which they have to spend money for everything out here in the county. There may be a zoning change, they may want to do something that's crossing a creek and it'd be an environmental issue. There may be some big issues that they think are bigger hurdles that they're going to have to, they would rather spend their money over here rather than us telling them that you have to spend your money on a road study and then we'll go through the environmental deal, can you cross that creek over here? Or can you build in this low-lying area? Or can you go through this zoning issue? We're telling them they have to spend money over here rather than them getting to choose which box they check first. We're telling them they have to check this, but they, all the boxes still have to be checked. We're just telling them, and each box costs money. We're just, prior to final approval, we're just telling them which box that they have to spend money on first.
Didn't initially this come up, Teresa, you help me here or correct me? Initially, this came up because some of the processes were being started and maybe even being completed even before DOT knew.
Yeah.
What was happening.
Yes.
And that shouldn't be.
That shouldn't be, so this is what we're trying to prevent.
But this isn't what that's doing. This isn't accomplishing that.
But this is written different than that.
Correct.
So are you happy with this language?
So this is not really, because again, this is dealing with commerce, this is dealing with a subdivision in an already designated commercial area. We're talking about you go up into Mountain Rest or you go to somewhere else and you're saying that you have to spend money over here when they may be going, I need to check the slope because we may not get past some slope studies.
I just don't, I, I clearly see what you're saying. Something just don't sound right about that process.
So my point is, is that we should say in our ten, the one thing we're looking at, is it should say applicant shall submit to, shall have, shall apply for approach, encroachment permit from South Carolina DOT or County Roads and Bridges prior to pre-approval. Or it should say applicant shall receive permit from transportation or roads and bridges prior to final approval as it's written. We shouldn't interchange words because we changed the structure of everything. We either have to say applied and pre-approval or leave it as it is.
Say it one more time, applied.
It either needs to stay exactly as it's written, but when, when we first started the conversation, we said, whoops, final approval isn't right. It should say pre-approval. But if it says pre-approval, it should also change the first sentence to apply, not approved. So as it's written is good, but we don't want to stick pre-approval in where it says final approval.
But this, Mr. Root... One of the reasons I wanted is to try to separate the two and just keep one twenty-three the way it is and submit this as a, as a separate one, not to be substituted for the one that's already been approved by the council. That way we could submit it as Mike suggested, as written. We still have to let Mr. Root look at it. It's got to make sense to him.
Should it not have something in it stating it's for subdivisions for housing development or whatever rather than just...
We, yeah, we can change it though.
I mean, it has nothing, right now it is basically anybody building anything that has to come in and get plans. If you're building a single home, the way this reads, but if we make it like, or similar to the one that's already been passed where it says subdivision standards or housing, I don't know, something to make it for a commercial entity rather than an individual.
We do, we would need to specify a number of homes. Again, one twenty-three has already been, so just imagine one twenty-three, if somebody put up a commercial structure building there, nobody's gonna say anything. But if somebody put up a commercial building in Waterford Point subdivision at the entrance, people are gonna go crazy, why did you put up this big commercial building at the entrance of our subdivision? Ninety percent of our area is residential, it's not commercial. So if you do take a commercial area and put in, it doesn't matter what you put in, whether it's a building or a bunch of houses, it's already a predetermined commercial area. It's like living near an airport or something, people know they live near the airport. But we're taking and applying a generalized principle or a specific principle across the entire county. And it doesn't really fit that way if we change these words on this document.
So, so if we leave it like this and, and.
But if you wanted to add subdivision, but then you had mentioned number of homes, which I think we, you said was eleven or more?
Yeah, and then that, that would make it specific for subdivisions rather than individuals.
It could then, it sounds like, and we'd want to get Mr. Root to see it, but it sounds like it would make it.
Dave, you were first.
Um, my question is to Jim, what, what do we not do now that this is gonna change?
So the final comments from DOT are not always being incorporated into their final comments. And this is more of.
This makes it able, for you able, this makes you able to enforce that concept.
On the final plan.
On the final.
On the final plan, okay. Teresa.
Okay, there's an area of concern and, which brings up the subdivision or not. And it's down in fair play, Feltman Road and eighty-two, there's a large tract that's been sold and it's being developed and it's driveway after driveway, right? And so on eighty-two, and it's, that's a fifty-five mile an hour road. So you're, so potentially there could be a zillion mailboxes there, people turning in off this high-speed highway. There's still a marker there to the, the child Angela Feltman, I think is her name, for she died in a car accident down there. That's kind, but that's not a subdivision, that's individual lots being sold out at once. And I mean, to me, I could think, well, an internal access to this whole area would alleviate this issue with mailbox after mailbox on a fifty-five mile an hour road. So I, it's not necessarily subdivision oriented, that's an example of, of.
So, and that is a disaster out there, they're called flag lots. And, and prior to James getting here, we were trying to deal with flag lot development, which it's easy for a, a, a small-time developer because they're not having to build infrastructure, they're not having to build a road. They can just run driveways, they have two houses up near the road and then a drive coming back and two houses behind those two houses. The way it should be built is a road that comes in and the house, instead of houses being behind houses, there's a road in between those houses. We tried to correct that with the private road standards that went, then everybody voted it down because the reason they don't do that is they don't have enough depth between the road and the back of the property to get a road with a fifty-foot right-of-way in there. So because they, it's too thin to do that, they just run a house behind a house because they only have setbacks at that point, they don't have right-of-ways to consider. We tried to correct that with reducing the private road right-of-way and it didn't go anywhere.
So that's not an answer to that situation? I'm not sure if this is an answer to the situation either.
It doesn't, this doesn't address that.
And if you just, and if you qualify to just subdivisions, that's really not a subdivision there because everything's so individual, right?
Individual lots, that's what I was thinking about that earlier.
But DOT still has to approve that access even for that house to be built in the permitting process, that road still has to, that driveway still has to be approved prior to starting to get your bill permit. So, so if it was just a driveway, there's not a thirty thousand dollar cost, it's just going and submitting it with your building permit. And it would get approved, and it really doesn't matter the order. But again, this won't change that because you've still got to check the box. We're just telling somebody, you gotta spend money here first if you're building a big subdivision. And they spend the money there and then they get nixed over here. I mean, maybe they need, maybe they need a, a, a variance on right-of-way, maybe they need, maybe they're going to build a planned unit development. Or I use an assisted living because it's a prime example because we need those here in the area. And, and if they do it in a control-free area, it's probably gonna be okay. And roads is gonna be your major expense. But if they try to do it in something that's more commercially designated or residential designated, now they've got to go through the zoning department, which is a two hundred thousand dollar expense to do all of the surveys, to go through all of the plan that you'd make from an engineer, which will include roads as well. But what we're saying is you gotta go spend your money on a road study prior to going to zoning or whatever, and you may get shot down there.
I just think that's a risk of business, I mean.
That's not, I mean.
That's just a risk of business, I just, but I don't know that no more encumbersome than our subdivision standards are, we haven't rejected one yet. I mean, what would the DOT process do to hinder that? I mean, I'm, I'm.
You're not actually talking about the same subject matter though.
Okay, I, we need a motion to proceed, do y'all want to send this to Mr. Root? Let him come up with a wording that is appropriate for this particular problem? Excuse me, or do you want to just change it altogether? So.
I think the first step is to move. I don't, I would like to move to submit this document, if you will, as is, thinking of it as an independent ordinance, ordinance addition, not as a substitute. In other words, keep one twenty-three as is. So we're submitting this to Mr. Root, asking him to look at it as an independent ordinance addition. And the present wording, which would, for clarity, means prior to final approvals. And that's my motion.
I'll second that. Or is there any discussion?
I want to make a motion to amend this before we send it. I think it needs to say, I'd like to make a motion that we add the same wording in here in relation to subdivision plans. A way it's not just individual.
Okay, well, could I comment on that? I don't know if anybody's seconded it, but I'll second it, just for discussion's sake. And Mr. Chair may I have to speak to that?
Go ahead.
So I think we ought to not only include that wording, Mr. Nix, but also clarify that we're talking about residential lots eleven or more.
Yes.
I don't exactly how we're gonna put that in there, but we can put in parentheses and just say further clarity and let Mr. Root look at it.
We can take that as an amendment to your motion.
Right.
What Mr. Nix has.
Can we vote on the initial motion? Frank, um, I actually probably meant to say what Mr. Gallen said in, in, in total, so I don't consider it an amendment. I, I think it's the wording necessary to clarify that it's not individual residences but subdivisions of eleven houses or greater. Now, maybe that's immaterial, maybe, maybe there's no cost for somebody with one resident. That, Mr. Johnson may can speak to that, maybe it's unnecessary wording, but I think.
I think it's a good starting point.
I think it's great wording and I like the, I like the idea of eleven or more. Um, to Ms. Spicer's point, some of the small, these non-developers just, you know, John Doe wants to build eight houses, he's a builder. And he's building driveways because it's way cheaper than doing development because he's not a developer, he's a builder. That's still gonna happen, when we say eleven or more, he's still gonna come in and do those driveways even if he has fifteen homes there because he's gonna do them one at a time. And so it's never gonna come across his desk as being a subdivision.
So is DOT gonna be left out of the loop for this, of ten or less?
There's, DOT's still involved because you've still got to get DOT approval or roads approval before you can build your driveway out onto that road. But.
As they subdivide those lots out, if they just are doing one new lot, just one lot out of this group, it is.
They don't get reviewed in the aggregate, only the individual lot is reviewed and will be approved. There's just nothing, I don't know how you regulate that.
And I don't.
Footage, could you put, you could, you know, in, in private residential lots, could you just say a footage? I mean, you can't have a driveway here and then twenty-five feet to feet, a hundred feet down the road, have another one and feet to feet, have another one. Could we?
But now you're in a subdivision and with the same, so now you're saying.
I'm not talking about subdivision, we're talking about the ten or less.
Yeah, the, the smaller.
But what I'm saying is, is if you regulate the distance between driveways, how many subdivisions have you been in where driveways are right next to each other?
Lots of them.
Every one of them.
Yeah.
Because there's a big tree that somebody wants to keep that you don't want to cut down, so you move your driveway over. So I, I don't think we can do it that way to solve the problem. I think the best we can do is to add those wordage, the, in relation to subdivision plans of eleven or more lots and do, it'd be the best we can do.
So the, the eleven or more, that's based on the definition of road, types of roads, right?
That affects the roads and bridges, it triggers the roads and bridges conversation.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember where that's related.
It would be eleven lots or more. Or more than eleven lots.
Maybe eleven or more, you want it ten or eleven or more.
Yeah, Teresa, we're all but a ten-lot development.
Okay, the original motion is to take.
Yeah, I mean, that's a stat.
It had been amended to add.
Listen, we haven't voted on the initial motion, so let's just take what we've said. The biggest question I have is whether not James and Elise have, have something in writing that they can pass on to Mr. Root.
We've got to have a specific motion, we can't have two different motions here. What I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get at, your original motion was to take it as is. We had an amended, amendment to that motion to add the subdivision of eleven or more, that that's what this applies to, not individual stuff.
Okay.
That's the motion.
And there's one other portion of that, it's also to make this A eleven and keep A ten as is, which is the one.
Right. So.
Okay, so that'd be.
Can I clarify my amendment then? Clarify my amendment? And then get a second on that?
Sure.
Uh, so I'll make a motion that we make this section eleven separate from uh, the existing section ten that we don't see in our regulations right now. And that we add the wording for eleven or more houses in a subdivision.
You can't really say houses.
In relation to subdivision plans of eleven units or greater, something of that nature.
Eleven lots, eleven residential lots.
But David, Mr. Root resolved, worked through.
Can we not say encroachment, eleven, eleven or more encroachments?
I'll second that.
I don't know if we can do encroachments or not.
Okay, I just, okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, what is to prevent a developer from having, Pat just said this. If we're doing a, for the situation of ten or less, phase one, one to ten, phase two, one to ten, phase, you know what I mean, there's a bunch of one to tens, phase one through twenty to get around this. Is that even on the realm of possibility?
The difference is, is that it's the builders that are causing the issue, not a developer. Developer's not gonna do the, the drive after drive after drive. So, so a developer is gonna give everything to James. A builder is gonna do ten, but he can't do ten anyway, he can do two. And then he can do two more, then he can do two more. So they're just gonna slip through the cracks.
Builder wants to employ the economy of scale anyway, they want, they want to get a permit for everything at one time, it saves them.
Saves them a lot of money.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Now, we, we don't have to worry about, we have to take a vote on the amended mo, amendment to the motion.
Could you say it again, what it is?
The amended motion is to take and add the subdivision language.
Section eleven.
And make it section eleven, not incorporate it into that, but add it as a amendment of section eleven and add subdivision to eleven or more to this document. That's the amendment. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're back to the original motion as amended. Any, any further discussion on yet? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, okay. Did we get that right?
Mr. Root listened, no?
Yeah, he'll, yeah, he'll, he'll send it back, like, ah, y'all did this all wrong, so we got that. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to number nine. Uh, discussion regarding twenty, twenty-three goals, objectives for the planning commission.
Got me to mention.
You go ahead with your words.
I was just, well, one of the reasons why this is on the agenda is because I asked what they put on the agenda, so I wanted to speak to it first. Is that typically we would, you know, be thinking about what we want to get accomplished in the year twenty twenty-three. And everyone's probably got different priorities, but what I was thinking is that we ought to have some kind of process to entertain whatever priorities each one of us have and then determine which of those are, as a group, are our highest priorities that we want to try to move forward on. And it's a typical process for any business or organization that, you know, occurs. But, um, I wasn't so much thinking that we would just start listing everything out there right now, tonight, as much as is everyone agreeable to having such process and willing to, um, you know, participate or bring, bring some ideas as to what you'd like to get accomplished this year.
Do we have an RV park ordinance, whatever happened?
Yep.
We, is it, it's fun, it's done and final?
There is a RV park ordinance.
Yes, it was done.
The commission's worked on and.
It was done last year.
Four, three, four, three. Three or less, you don't have to do anything to it, four or more, you have to follow the ordinance. That wouldn't be a bad idea for everyone to think about between now and I don't know that we can get it back on the next agenda with the things that's coming up. But we possibly get it to March, first meeting in March, back on the agenda, give you from now till then to come up with some things that y'all would like to see us accomplish this year. Uh, I'll tell you mine right off the bat, we need to develop standards. We need to get this urban planner in here and, and get this going because it's gonna take almost the remainder of the year to get it done right, which is not something we're gonna rush, or at least I hope we don't try to rush it. But it'd give everybody a couple of weeks, about three weeks or so, four weeks to think about what y'all want to get out of this year. And we can come up with a list, if you want to, you can send them to James. Email James, this is what I'd like to get accomplished this year. He can come back at our next meeting or at the March first meeting in March maybe with a list of this is what everyone's come up with. And we can vote on at that point, or we can discuss it and change the priority, what we think we need to do first, what we need to do second. And, uh, but that'll give everybody some time to think about it.
Has anybody else got anything that they want to put out there? It's out on my list too. Um, what quality development and provide planning for land development regulations. So, does anybody, I mean, the other things, certainly agriculture. Uh, we've got that task force report, seems like we want to filter through it and see what kind of action needs to be taken.
Yeah, while I'm thinking about it, James, you need, you want to give a brief update on what the task force is doing at this present time?
Yeah, so it's the last task force meeting, they went through the preliminary draft of the report, uh, through all the recommendations, made several edits and that should be on the next council agenda. So there should be, that should be publicly available very soon.
Do we, by the end of the, the last meeting in February? Because they didn't have one.
I think it's gonna be the first meeting in March.
Yeah, I think that's what you said.
One of my agendas or one of my goals would be, it's. Mister, one of my agendas or one of my goals would be, it seems like this subdivision and development standard is going to be a long road. I think the simplest thing we could do to uh alleviate some of that issue is set a density standard, maybe change our density a little bit. That would help. Uh, but I've 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 come to the realization. Um, either you build a lot of houses in one spot or you build a lot of houses in a lot of spots, you know? And I don't really know where the common ground is there because from agriculture or standard, you know, I just, to be honest with you, I just see no win for us. Uh, because, I mean, the only win for us would be just to knock it out, which I know that's not a reality. Uh, and I've discussed with some folks and we've been back and forth about densities and standards and uh I wish we could come up with maybe just some better stuff that we have, but I don't know that we can, I mean, if they if if O'Conne's destined to have five thousand houses built in the county, there's going to be five thousand houses built somewhere. Uh, but I have seen some encouraging things. Uh, if you get out and ride around some of these older neighborhoods, I've just happened to be over on Moore Avenue and West Union and W- Wallow right there on the city limit. Uh, I don't know who the builder is, but he's bought up a bunch of those little lots and built a bunch of little houses and they're really nice and neat and well organized and well placed. And, you know, I think that's the thing to do. Uh, I don't know if that's. Mr. Johnson, you might have an uh uh answer for me to that. I don't see why that's not done more.
What size lots are they on?
They they're small. They're very small, maybe eighth acre, quarter acre. I mean, they are very small lots, maybe like thousand square foot houses. And uh but I see a lot of them and uh.
But that that really goes to that that point. Your first sentence was we got to control density because you're going to build five thousand houses in too small of an area. And then your other was, I really like these homes that are on posted stamp lots. So those.
But it's already in a in a and I see exactly what you're saying, but it's already in an incorporated area, already in a dense area, you know, residential area. And they're really cleaning up a lot of these older neighborhoods and uh.
So my point has always been, O'Conne County is not a one size fits all. We've got to, we can't just say across the board. We're going to control density by this acreage thing because that would have prevented them from even being able to go in and renovate what they just did. So we can't do just a one size fits all, or it's going to prevent those little things like that, which are cool, from happening.
Right. Well, I've always been an advocate for us, whatever we do is in the unincorporated areas, you know, but I don't want to bore everybody with my.
Um, go ahead and then I would say.
I'm 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 good, but I I still uh just, I I would love everybody's ideas on that, but just always think about our our open areas, our our agriculture. Uh, and um I mean, we've all eat today. I've eaten one time. Typically, I've eaten twice or three times by now. But I just don't think people think about that. The impact on agriculture in O'Conne County is just a small piece of the pie worldwide, nationwide, but the issue is, is this is happening everywhere. The impacts everywhere. And I'd like for us to be a leader and people say, look what O'Conne County, South Carolina are doing to protect agriculture. And uh, Mr. uh Gollan, I appreciate your support for you mentioned that, so thank you.
Dave.
I don't know if y'all recall. A few months ago, I recommended a a surgical correction to the ordinances to try to address density issues of subdivisions. And instead, we've been steered towards the bureaucracy of having somebody come in and do a huge study and give us some nonspecific guidance. And maybe a complete overhaul of section thirty-two. Now, how long do you think that's going to take? So the question is, which direction do you want to go? Do we want to surgically try to fix the issue in the short term? Or do we want to sit around and pay people to do studies? And try to do an overhaul of section thirty-two? I'll let y'all think about that.
Um, as far as some of the things that I'll be bringing to the table is is definitely then we've got to come up with some better development standards. Um, and I would like to revisit this protecting ag land. Um, Gwen McPhail, when she was here years ago, um, really worked hard at trying to do this self-imposed zoning that uh in an agriculture area so that developers couldn't come in behind and create density. And there was a whole lot of traction on it and then all of a sudden it went dead. And it but it is truly a way to protect ag land, at least the way it was set up at the time. So I'd like to potentially revisit that.
All right. So basically, you got your homework for the next month, I guess, till the first meeting in March, anyway. Uh, try to come up with something, send it to James.
Mr. Chair, just, I mean, I'm hoping that we can somehow capture those suggestions in the minutes so that we have something to um move forward on our next discussions.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
I want to throw out one more thing.
Got it.
We have development standards, section thirty-two. There's several hundred pages, a couple hundred pages. I don't understand it's not good enough. So but I just want to make it clear, we do have development standards.
We actually have twenty-six, thirty-two, and thirty-eight.
Correct. Thirty-eight is a part of it as well.
Yeah.
So why doesn't it work? I don't know if it's an enforcement issue or a clarity issue or a or a. I don't know. That's a good question. I mean, I think we all agree that.
It works for some things. It just doesn't work for certain things.
Right.
And those certain things seem to be related to agricultural interaction with subdividers.
You ask why twenty-six, thirty-two, and thirty-eight don't work. It's not that they don't work. They actually work exactly like they're supposed to work. They don't stop development, but they're not designed to stop development. That's really the thing you want to do. They're they don't um restrict clear cutting because we don't have that as a line item on those things. Um, cutting everything, you know, clear cutting, changing the topographies, things like that, haven't been an issue before in our county. They're becoming an issue now because the truly outside developers. Um, as opposed to small sectioned off development where it was individual houses, now it's track home housing, which we've not seen before in the past in our county. And track housing has changed the look of what development is, and we don't really address that side of it. So but it's performing exactly what it's supposed to do.
And I agree with you. I agree with that. Uh, like I mentioned before, uh, I've been to other counties which I know have way more stringent standards than we have, and I don't really see anything different, you know, in my perspective, in agriculture's perspective. So. Thank y'all guys for the positive comments. I appreciate it.
Not not correcting you. We don't want to stop development.
Right.
We're just wanting to manage the growth that we are seeing in the county. We're, development's coming. We want people in our county. We but we're not trying to stop this. We're just trying to manage it in some way.
And that's a good clarification. I didn't mean to suggest that I wanted to stop it. I was just saying that so much of the community says, stop the development, stop the development, stop the development. We have development standards, none of which are designed to stop development.
And to me, they're lax. But anyway, any other comments?
I'm just glad to ask the question because I think Mr. Nix brought a good question, thought-provoking question is. You know, and it may not be either or, it might be both, but I like your idea about surgically going through and determining where can we make improvements. I mean, that seems to be the first thing that we can do and it's a low cost way of trying to improve things. That I mean, I don't know what the process would be in order to do that. Do we need to have a work session where we just spend, you know, maybe a separate meeting from our regular meetings to talk about that, or do we incorporate it into a regular meeting?
Response to Mr. Gollan. If we go back a few meetings, we had a we had a suggestion on the books. And I think Mr. Root even concurred that it could work about the uh a small, a few small changes that would uh control or limit density in subdivisions and allow allow a developer or an owner to self-zone into a different uh zoning requirement, residential, for example. And I, you know, I thought that regulation was non-restrictive as far as property rights, but but it was uh restrictive as as far as density. And I think that was one thing we were looking for, was, you know, try to get the best of both worlds. So I think we go back and my opinion is we go back and resurrect that suggestion and see if we can act on it.
I think those are all all great things. And remembering back, there were some some trigger points of sizes, and then there was also the, once you submit something that you automatically transfer into a current zoning category. So I like those. What does scare me is when Gwen McPhail was doing what she was doing with agriculture, I sat back and deferred to her because she knew agriculture. Many of us on this don't understand the development process and how that how that works, and it does scare me for us to try to do something that we're not expert to have the expertise of. If we get too involved.
Well, that's why Clemson University is graduating people in development every year.
I I definitely want us to do something. I just want us to make sure that we're not trying to I want to make sure that we're doing it right if we're going to take the reins to do it.
What's the status of our new men member?
That is under council's discretion whenever they decide to vote and appoint one. It's just a matter of waiting to see what they want to do. So uh, with that said, is there any other business? If not, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.